Good morning, and we'll call to order the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada, Ms. Quigley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Your first item is to conduct your first citizens' participation period.
This is the first time set aside for public comment those wishing to speak to the board on a posted agenda item. Now is your opportunity. Okay, a lot of these cards are for, I guess, the contracts. What agenda item? Why don't we just have those people that want to speak on the respective contracts start to head up? And I apologize on the name, Janai Gassioni. Lisa Popovsky. Marcia Blake. Amanda Ship. And Jessica DeVivo. All right, and those that, you can sit in the front row, two mics. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Anna Talamo from Southern Nevada Transit. I just would like to thank the commission and the RTC for the continued support of all of our programs, as well as the Veterans Medical Transportation. Between that and our SNTC Para program, we move five, move, that's a horrible word, sorry. We transport 5,000 individuals to their medical appointments. So again, I'd like to thank you for awarding it for us.
Good morning, my name is Janai Gassion. On behalf of everyone at Opportunity Village, I wanted to say thank you to the board and the executive management team. We complete 1,200 rides per month, serving up to 100 significantly disabled people per day out in the community. And I wanted to share just a brief story about the impact that this grant has. I was actually standing in the lobby of one of our facilities, and there was a sister who was waiting for her brother. And she was like, "I'm so thrilled that Ryan learned how to put his seatbelt on." So I ran back to the staff, and I was like, "Kudos to you guys, you're doing awesome work." They were like, "That wasn't us. The individuals were so excited to go to the YMCA every Monday that they taught each other how to do that." So those are just one of the small stories that happens every single day that gives our individuals an opportunity to be involved in the community. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to note that yesterday, the RTC executive team went and had a tour of the Englestadt campus with OV, and wow, what a very impactful, and it was a great tour, and really appreciate our partnership with OV.
My name is Lisa Popovsky with the Jewish Family Service Agency, and we run the Senior Lifeline, which allows frail and elderly seniors to be transported to medical and social service appointments, shopping for those that don't have transportation and a way to get to any other shopping, and to a congregate meal. We're one of the only congregate meals in the city that provides transportation for those shut-in seniors that are isolated in the community. So we thank you very much for supporting our program.
Marcia Blake, I'm the Executive Director of James C. Strand Helping Hands of North Las Vegas, and also representing Dana Serrato with Helping Hands of Vegas Valley, as we collaborate our two programs together. And we provide transportation to over 700 seniors each month to medical appointments, the grocery store, and personal errands. I don't know if you guys are aware, but we are having a huge surge of chemo patients and dialysis patients that need to get to those appointments multiple days a week. Without the funding that you guys approve, we would not be able to get these clients to those life-saving medical procedures. So we thank you greatly. Also, our capital project that we received last year for the new vehicle, and one we applied for again this year as well, those new vehicles are imperative to be able to provide this transportation because we spend so much time with our older vehicles out of service and needing maintenance, these newer vehicles stay on the road, and they work wonderfully, and it's a great, safe way to get our clients to their appointments. So thank you very much.
Good morning, my name is Amanda Ship, I'm with Easter Seals Nevada. On behalf of Easter Seals Nevada and the adults with disabilities that we serve, we would like to thank MJ and Tina and the board for their support and their continued support on funding 5307 to provide transportation for adults with disabilities to work in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Jessica DeVivo, on behalf of the Blind Center of Nevada. I just wanted to thank you all so much for your support for the center and the good work occurring here in Southern Nevada for the blind community and those struggling with the debilities of vision loss here. Because of your assistance and ongoing support, our members who are unable to drive themselves have been able to have transportation access, they're able to attend our center, attend our classes, and learn new skills, socialize with others in a similar situation. And they're now living their lives with a newfound hope, independence, and the ability to pursue greatness in life despite their visual limitations. And so while the number does continue to be on the rise for those losing their sight, their vision here in Clark County in Southern Nevada, we are, we still have a long way to go, but we're so excited by what this year holds, and with your support and our community's support, it's so wonderful. And especially in light of what's going on this year for us and our new facility that's being built, we're very excited with how we'll be able to even further reach this community. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board? If I could just add, we certainly appreciate those that took the time to come down and thank the board, and more so MJ and your staff that deal with these organizations day in and day out, their empathy, their compassion, their care, it's wonderful. And I think on behalf of the board, as much as you've thanked us, we want to thank you because you're the ones, you are truly our partners. And without you and your organizations and your efforts, RTC couldn't provide that service. There's too much demand out there, but having you alongside us makes a difference. So thank you for all coming down. We'll close this portion of public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Next item is item number two, which is to approve the agenda. We would like to, we do have some changes, we'd like to request that item number eight and item number 75 be pulled from the agenda. Otherwise, the agenda is in order and ready for your approval. We will come back with, 75 was closed-door session, which we will do not need to do. Item eight we will come back with, it was just missing some administrative stuff.
A move for, motion on the floor for approval with those changes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next up is your general manager's report. We do have a few things to share with you. The first item in our report is an operator recognition for MV transportation. LaShawna Jamerson lights up the room with her smile. Is she here? Can we have you come down, LaShawna? She is loved by her coworkers and customers alike, and is a pleasure to work with on a daily basis. Ms. Jamerson has been driving RTC buses for 16 years. And as a Las Vegas native, yeah, that's great, she knows, she knows our roads. Her excellent customer service doesn't go unnoticed. One happy customer contacted Mayor Goodman and told her that LaShawna makes this old lady smile each day.
I want to say thank you guys for honoring me today. MV transportation's been great work for you guys, and I'm going to keep on doing the great work that I've been doing out there. I'm so privileged to have this award. I worked so hard, I started at this company at 22-years-old, and now 16-years-in, and thank you for recognizing me, you guys. Thank you so much.
Next, we'd like to recognize an operator from Keolis, Wendell Dumat. Is Wendell here? Come on down, Wendell. We have a story about Wendell. He was waiting, was waiting for assistance after his coach ran into a gas tank leak on Route 201, which is Tropicana. He witnessed a car crash into a light pole and catch fire. Mr. Duma immediately sprang into action by grabbing a fire extinguisher to put out the flames, pulling one of the passengers out of the car, and instructing the other passenger to call 911. When the light pole began to emit sparks, he directed bus passengers to move away from the coach. Mr. Duma communicated with base operations control throughout the entire situation and remained extremely calm and professional. He saved a man's life and protected the safety of his passengers, so he certainly deserves our recognition.
A little shocked, but I appreciate it. Thanks to everybody.
All right, you can go ahead and sit down, although I do want to share a story with you as well. I'd like to take a moment to recognize some RTC staff members for outstanding work on our recent triennial review performed by the Federal Transit Administration. This is where they come in and evaluate us, take a look at all our administrative processes, and so kind of audit all that we're doing. And this is, so it's a massive federal review of our entire transit system operations and administration that includes several months of preparation and a three-day onsite visit. So it's having, like having somebody come and audit you for three days. At the end of the process, the FTA reviewer praised Lisa Bean. Lisa, you want to stand up if you're with us? And Sherwin Gutierrez, Sherwin?
He's on the stage.
Oh, he is? Okay. From our finance department for their amazing efforts in overseeing the review for the RTC and their great work managing and coordinating this effort with all the RTC Transit Department. So it's very unusual that the FTA actually calls out specific people. He was also very impressed that Lisa and Sherwin had narrowed down our open grants to just four, as most agencies across the country have done dozens of open grants that are a huge burden to administer for the agency and the FTA. In addition, historically transit agencies have struggled the most in complying with the complex regulations of the FTA's disadvantaged business program. And I'm happy to report that thanks to Tanita Brown's efforts, Tanita? You have her? Stand up! That our purchasing and contracts department, the RTC had zero findings in this area. Extremely unusual, very hard to do. So this is a huge accomplishment for us and for Tanita. As a reference, the national average for FTA findings in a triennial review for a transit agency is six, and the RTC was well below that with just three very minor findings overall related to document issues. So, thank you to the team, you guys, I know that's really hard. Thanks for making us look so good.
Tina, I think Sherman is back at the Patriots three-day.
Sherwin, yes.
And that was paid time, yes.
So that concludes your general manager's report. Next on the agenda is item number three, which is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's report from your director, Rudy Melfaban.
Thank you, Tina. Wanted to start out by talking about, we're still waiting for details about the Trump infrastructure plan.
Oh, my, yeah.
They're making the rounds, discussing some of this stuff, but one of the more controversial elements that's wrapped up in this is dealing with FAA and air traffic controllers and privatization of that. And unfortunately, that's going to be dragging down some of this efforts with the infrastructure plan as they discuss that as well. But the idea is to come up with $200 billion in federal funding through tax breaks that over 10 years would leverage a trillion dollars in spending for infrastructure, which is broader than just transportation, could be utilities and airports, waterways, everything. So more to come on that, hopefully it's going to come together. Some of the things that we heard when I attended the annual, or the spring meeting of the state DOTs had to do with expanding current programs, like the TFI program, it's a loan program at the federal level, which we have not used. We considered using it before, but we ended up bonding, issuing our own debt, which was cheaper than going through the TFI program. So some of these things might be helpful for other states in the infrastructure plan that's proposed, but some of them might not fit Nevada that well. The other thing is that in line with regulations, they will be having a more formal process to get information from the other agencies such as RTC and the State of Nevada Department of Transportation on federal regulations or policies that really delay the delivery of projects. Two of the ones that have come up quite a bit for the state departments of transportation are one issue related to what's called fiscal constraint. So there's a planning process, you have to show the money in your, for that project before you can start doing some things in the plan. We do a lot of environmental clearances for projects, but the feds want to make sure that they're real projects, and this fiscal constraint aspect does limit what we can do, because if you have to show all the funding for a project, we want to get started and get projects through the process, get them started through the pipeline, get environmental clearance, eventually get onto design and construction, and that's an issue that's been a challenge for us. The other item is Section 4F, and it's in the, in environmental clearances, Section 4F has to do with, one of the projects down here was the Colorado River Bridge in Laughlin had a, one of the alternatives had it going next to a park, baseball or softball park. And it gets to be, that's covered under that Section 4F, historic buildings or historic areas of a town, when there's a project next to that, it can bog down the process, as well as maybe wildlife and refuges for waterfowl can be a drag on the process. So those are areas where we're going to be anticipating some feedback to the feds on some delays that we've seen on actual projects. As far as the legislature, I see that we're going to have a more comprehensive legislative briefing to this board, but I wanted to express my appreciation of the RTC staff, that, I mean, they were very tireless in their efforts to shepherd some of those bills and provide a lot of information to the legislators and the LCB staff about things that were important to NDOT as well, with the state infrastructure bank, the extending the sunset on the construction manager at-risk process as ability to procure projects using CMAR, and also the P3 enabling legislation for Clark County. That was something, as they talk about an infrastructure plan, that could include public-private partnerships, I think that was important to get that enabling legislation. So thank you for your efforts, Tina, of your staff, and getting those things shepherded through. There was one thing of note that the governor vetoed a study for transportation needs in East Las Vegas, that we feel that we will work with RTC of Southern Nevada and the local public works agencies to look at the streets. Obviously, NDOT's underway with the traffic study on the highways, the freeways in that area of the city of the Las Vegas Valley, but we know that it's more comprehensive than that. It's also the streets, the arterials in there that we have to look at. So although the governor vetoed it, he felt that it kind of overstepped into the executive branch and the transportation board authority, but we did explain to the, our board of transportation that there is a process, that what you see later today on your agenda with the Unified Planning Work Program, that's really the process to get some of these transportation studies through the, having everybody, Clark County, the cities down here, RTC and NDOT work together on these types of plans, just like we're doing on the Boulder City Corridor with RTC. So we'll get that done through other, the normal means of planning and studying transportation issues here, but I just wanted to mention that we will go forward and work with RTC on that. NDOT is going to be reviewing the proposals for the I-15 Garnet interchange design-build project out there by Apex Industrial Center. And the transportation board meeting was changed, as far as the date of that, is Thursday, July 6th at 9:00 a.m. in Carson City with video conferencing down here to Las Vegas. Typically, it would have been the following Monday, but because I'm mentioning that in line with I-15 Garnet proposals, because we would have, if it had been announced, it would have been on that Monday, but because the meeting, transportation board is on Thursday, we won't have that recommendation to the director, to me, until Friday. So we'll have an announcement as, through, it won't be through that, that transportation board meeting, because that's the day before the, we make the decision. So I just wanted to make that point, and I know that, Mr. Chairman, you might be coming up to address the board as well in that July, so I wanted to make the point that it is earlier than anticipated. With that, that concludes the director's report, and I'm willing to answer any questions.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Commissioner?
So Rudy, the governor vetoed Senator Orin Shaw's bill, right? But there's still going to be some kind of a study? What was it exactly that they wanted to study? Do you know offhand? I didn't get to sit in on that.
Yes, Senator Orin Shaw mentioned some specific streets that were a concern that he's heard from his constituents. So what I intend to do is get with Tina and look at some of the testimony that he provided in introducing that bill, and we'll probably reach out, I'm sure, to him directly to find out what his constituents are telling him, so that we can better define what the transportation study will encompass.
Yeah, because that's my district, and I know we're doing some updates on Hollywood and Lake Mead and a variety of other things, so let's see how we need to coordinate. So I know, we did do, as Public Works does do surveys, so between my district, Maryland's and Lawrence's, we have 40% or more of our roads are in poor condition up on that east side, so that may have triggered some of that conversation, for all I know. CMAR did go pa, it got broadened, right? They put CMAR back in?
The, there were two bills for construction manager at risk, CMAR. The one that was approved was Senator Menendez, that I think it was a simple approach of extending the sunset date a couple of years.
Okay, that was clean, that's easier to, but at least allows everybody, so it was going to be limited, correct? And then, is design-build a separate category now that had to be enacted, or, I'm trying to remember?
No, the, there might be an update on design bill, but it was separate bills in the past, and design bill was separate from the CMAR bills that legislature has considered. There is a separate section for design-build for NDOT, because we have our own chapter.
Right.
But the legislative team might have an update on, because there, I think that there was something giving some more flexibility on design build that might have, might have passed, I don't know.
Hey, I'm not sure, I remember something, I don't know why it popped into my head, so maybe we can find out on that. And then, does, I know you're still in meetings and figuring out how to give local jurisdictions some of 215 in lieu of state highways, but I've, I'm trying to find out, are you, do you have anything for Nellis? I've been asked again, on updates, upgrading the land, the medians, painting them, putting in even the metal sculptures?
I'd have to follow up on that, Commissioner. I know that, I was discussing that with my deputy director, Tracy Larkin-Thomason, and she said that she's going to set up a meeting with you and others that are interested to discuss that, and our staff are down this week to talk with Dennis Cedarburg tomorrow, as well as the city of Las Vegas on the Summerlin transfer. So the conversations are still ongoing, but we have to connect with some of the electeds on what the, how it's going.
And I think, I don't know if it was us that did it, or if NDOT did it, because there've been quite a few accidents on the corner of Charleston and Nellis, and I think somebody was looking at turn lanes, does that ring a bell at all? And it may have just been our public works people that...
I'll follow up on Charleston and Nellis.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Thank you, Rudy.
Your next item is your consent agenda, which is made up of items five through 72, and as noted, we would like to delete, pull item number eight and bring it back to at a later date.
There's a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Your next...
Opposed? Motion passes. Commissioner?
Thank you. My screen just froze, but on item six and seven, do you have like a hard copy you could also provide us? And/or a link?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Item number 73 is to receive an update from RTC staff on the 2017 legislative session and take any action deemed appropriate. Angela Castro will handle this item, but before she does, I just want to, I want to comment, I know all of you are very familiar with the legislative process and certainly the challenges that go along with it. One minute you think everything's going your way, and then the next minute it's not. We were very lucky to have some legislative legislators who were champions for the things that we were working on, and we had a pretty heavy agenda. We had, we had about four items in particular that we really were watching and were important to us. Happy to report that everything that we were championing for did pass, and that is in no small part due to Angela's leadership with her team there. Most of you know her, you know that she is humble, she is hungry, and she is people-smart. And she employed, needed to employ all of those, that skillset as she navigated. I'll tell you a funny story, she called me one day, early in the morning, actually, she called me the night before saying, "I need to talk," and I knew, I was, if I was going to sleep that night, I did not want to talk to her right then, so I put it off till the morning, talked to her, and she said, was talking about how difficult something was she was working on related to SB 149. And I said, "Ange, I want, I need you to know, it's going to be okay. If this doesn't pass, it's going to be okay." And she said, "It is not going to be okay." And so I got on a plane right away and came up. But she also built a chemistry amongst her team, and you know when you're working on these, you can't do it yourself, you have to have a strong team. And she built an amazing chemistry with David Clyde, who is a part of the RTC team, and I know David's here. So David, you just stand up for a minute, because you did, and we don't have to clap yet, but I, he and Angela are going to need an applause here in a minute. But also Ed Garcia from Holland and Hart, Brittany Walker from Holland and Hart, but she also worked collaboratively with each of your teams and lobbyists in, up at the legislature, and she was regularly getting calls from them saying, "What's up, Coach? What are we doing today?" And to be able to do that, to be able to build a team, a collaborative effort with so many disparate groups, is really a talent and a skillset that I think often goes unrecognized. So with that, I would like, before she even starts, to give her and David Clyde and the rest of the team a round of applause, because they worked it and they won, they have a 100% success rate up there. So. (applause)
With that, Ange, tell them what you did.
Great. Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Angela Castro with the RTC. So Tina already paid kudos, but I also need to do the same thing. I would like to take a moment definitely to recognize our Carson City team. Collaboratively, I have to tell you, we tracked and monitored more than 100 bills. We led efforts on four pieces of legislation with the help of your government affairs teams as well. We hosted a Transportation Innovation Day and changed the face of, you know, public transportation and technology up in Carson City. And then we provided testimony and support to numerous pieces of legislation. The team did an outstanding job, and I just want, we already recognized them, but it was important that I also recognized them as well, because they did an amazing job. Just to give you an update, for the purposes of today, we're going to focus on our high-priority pieces of legislation. Senate Bill 422 is a regional planning bill that was really truly led by Commissioner G. and Mayor-elect March. This bill passed and was signed by the governor. It repeals the SNRPC Act, and it broadens the authority of SNRPC. Also, the SNRPC in this piece of legislation may designate the RTC as the official administrator of the Southern Nevada Strong Regional Plan. So big kudos to Commissioner Gianculliani and also Mayor March, Mayor-elect March for this. The next piece of legislation was Assembly Bill 234, which is Harvey's Law, and this also passed and was signed by the governor recently. What this is going to require is that the training of operators on first aid and safety, it would be implemented once our new contract goes into place. So this is in 2019. In addition to that, taxi cab and transportation network companies are exempted from the training requirement. And again, this bill passed and was signed by the governor. The next bill is the RTC's enabling legislation. This was also passed and delivered to the governor. However, there were amendments made, and I, sorry, apologize in advance for the text-heavy slide, but I wanted to make sure that we were clear on what the amendments were. The first thing, it adds a population cap, so that the provisions of the bill will only apply to counties with a population of 700,000 or more. So basically, this bill only, the provisions that were made are only applied to Clark County. It requires the RTC to specify, or provides that the RTC may only submit one ballot question proposing to raise a sales tax to the voters and must do so on or before December 30th, 2020. And then the last thing is that the RTC, it requires the RTC to specify as part of the ballot question, the location of where the transportation projects would be located. So in addition to the list, they also wanted specifics as to the location. And that is Senate Bill 149. Those are the three primary amendments that were made. The next bill, the next two bills actually, again, we looked at it as this is the best way to prepare us in terms of the federal government and the new administration. There's a lot of speculation about public-private partnerships and state infrastructure bank that Rudy has talked about. So this bill passed and was delivered to the governor, however, there were amendments as well. It adds, once again, the population cap that where the provisions of the bill would only apply to counties of 700,000 or more, so this bill only applies to Clark County. It clarifies that public-private partnerships cannot be used for toll road, toll road projects, I'm sorry. And it specifies that public-private partnerships can only be used for transportation facilities. The next bill, which also passed and is delivered to the governor, is the Assembly Bill 399, which is the state infrastructure bank bill. Projects funded from the bank are subject to prevailing wage requirements, so that was an amendment. It clarifies that the advisory committees may include people with civil engineering experience. It only requires the governor to appoint an executive director to the extent that money is available from public or private sources for administrative cost. We had mentioned at the previous board meeting that there was also Utility Infrastructure Bank was added as a possible account, so it clarifies that a utility in the bill is a connection between a utility and a distribution facility installed by the developer. And then lastly, it states that the board of directors are public officers and meetings have to comply with open meeting law. This was passed and delivered to the governor as well. The next bill was Senate Bill 246. This is the Construction Managers at Risk Bill. This passed at 11:50 p.m. at Sinady. It was a really big deal. It extends the authority to use the C-MAR delivery method as an option through June 30, 2021. And then, David Clyde was looking up on this. In terms of Commissioner G., your question, in terms of design-build, it basically says that they can do up to two, the local governments can do up to two projects, and I believe the threshold was at $5 million. And this was because a lot of, I believe, the design, the engineering community had some concerns, so it allows them to do up to two for design-build. The last bill was Senate Bill 207, which is the Interim Legislative Committee on Transportation. My last report to you last month was that this bill was in Senate finance. It did not advance, but based on discussions with the governor's office recently regarding the intent of the legislation, we're working directly with them on an executive order to study and make recommendations on transportation-related issues. So we feel that the governor's, the executive order will, will be able to help us further educate our legislators and our community from a statewide perspective about all the issues related to transportation. In conclusion, transportation did really well this session. It was no easy task, but it was because of the overwhelming support that we received from you, your government affairs teams, our track committee members, the business community, and our community stakeholders. As we experienced challenges throughout the legislative process, we called on these groups for support, and without hesitation, everyone came to the table and assisted in various ways. Make no mistake about it, we could not have done this alone, and we want to thank our stakeholders and our community partners for their shared passion and commitment in moving our community forward. Thank you.
And I will just also throw in there, great kudos and appreciation for some of the legislators up there, who I know took a lot of risk and really championed for us behind the scenes and openly. Could not have done it without them as well. So it was a great session. We had some good leaders up there.
Comments or questions? Great job.
Woo, yes, it's done. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, your next item is item number 74, which is to receive a presentation for the review of certain matters related to the July 1st, 2017 increase in fuel taxes made under the provisions of section, lots of numbers, of Nevada revised statutes and Chapter 4.07 of the Clark County Code. And Mark Trausdahl, our Director of Finance, will handle that.
Thank you, Tina. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, we'll start off looking at this updated slide. As of March 31, 2017, 170 design and construction contracts have been awarded, which includes 78 small business, small businesses, for a total of $430 million in contracts awarded, creating approximately 5,560 jobs. This chart shows the 10-year rolling average of PPI and also just the annual PPI. The annual PPI you can see in the blue line, and the yellow is the 10-year rolling average. For calendar year 2016, the Producer Price Index was minus 2%, as shown on the blue line over 16, and that reduced the 10-year rolling average down to 2.15%. On July 1st, 2016, the 10-cent cap was reached, and due to the 10-cent cap, the percentage increase in the fuel tax rate was 0.5% instead of the 3.43% rolling 10-year average shown on the previous slide. The FRI-1 gas tax will continue at 10 cents per gallon into the future. On July 1 of 2017, the FRI-2 program starts out with an increase to the gas tax of 1.3 cents per gallon. This slide shows us a history of revenue and what we're projecting for the revenue on FRI-1. Actual collections of index fuel tax was approximately $81 million for fiscal year 16, and projected to be $85 million for fiscal year 17, and $88 million for fiscal year 18. For the new FRI-2 program, we're projecting revenue to be approximately $6 million in fiscal year 18. And that concludes my prepared comments. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Comment, question?
Mayor Goodman?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. What are we doing about battery-operated vehicles taking care of their roadway obligations or any non-gas vehicles?
Sure, I'll go ahead and take that. So the, the transportation study, the executive order that the governor is going to create to identify a committee to review policy issues related to transit and transportation, that will be one of the agenda items on the, for this, for that, that board to address and make recommendations. It wouldn't be until the year 2019 in that legislative session that any recommendations were enacted.
And would that be something, if I may, Mr. Chairman, that has to go through the legislative process and the voting process twice, once a decision is made?
That, yeah, that's going to depend on the recommendation. There are several different approaches to starting to get electric vehicles to pay for roads, become road usage fees. Different states are approaching it in different ways. Some have just that, when you register your vehicle, you play a, pay a flat fee, others are looking at odometers. This committee, again, will be tasked with coming up with some recommendations, policy recommendations to take forward for adoption.
And so there was nothing brought up at this legislative session?
There was. There was AB 401, and it died pretty early on.
I figured. Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Very well. Your next agenda item, we're pulling item number 75, so your next item is item number 76, which is to conduct your last citizen's participation period.
It's the second time set aside for public comment. Those wishing to speak to the board, step forward to the microphone, state your name for the record. Barbara McDougall.
I'm here.
Barbara, we could get a microphone up there to you, if you want to...
I think you have to walk into your room.
No, wait, just, Barbara, hold on for a sec. Wait. We're going to bring a mic up, just so it captures your voice. Good morning. Thank you.
Good morning. This is my first time appearing at this meeting, coming to this meeting, and I can say honestly, I'm disappointed. I could barely hear you guys and didn't know what was being said, and I could barely read that screen. As a senior citizen, that's a problem that we have. My issue today is about paratransit. While it's a nice service, there's a lot that is to be desired. I believe that a nutrition study needs to be done on this service. Too many of us are left too often waiting for a bus to come and pick us up, or getting us to our locations on schedule. Then to find out that some of the places in which we need to go is not serviced by the paratransit service, so it's like, how do we know this in advance? I hope none of you have to rely on this transportation. You will find out what we're talking about as senior citizens, 70, 80, 90 years old, waiting out in this heat for a bus that may or may not come. And I'm asking you to rectify this situation sooner rather than later. Just this morning, a bus was supposed to pick me up at 7:30, didn't get there to 8:20. This is what I'm talking about. I have nothing else to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and I don't, I know that we posted on the agenda, but if there's any way we could have a staff member in and around the door, so if there's someone as far as hearing or visual, that we can make accommodations for them. I know that we offer that, but let's try to be proactive at the front door. And if we could have someone from paratransit talk to Barbara. Any other, others wishing to speak to the board this morning? Seeing and, Mayor Lee?
Seeing that no one else has come, I, this morning, reading the paper, and I'm starting to realize that this is, this nuclear waste issue is probably going to be coming very quickly at us, and as a member for 12, 14 years of the High Level Nuclear Waste Committee, I can tell you that all the work that we did through many years of Senator Reed there is being undone very, very fast. And so, Tina, I was just curious if we dusted off that plan, what the routes are going to be, what, what potentially, I know John Porter and I talked yesterday, there's a transportation meeting today, Friday, I mean, I don't know if there's any discussion on this, but, you know, we are the third most active state with earthquakes, behind California and Alaska, and I'm totally against moving this poison through our valley, but it almost seems like if we can't fight it off, we can support someone else. If New Mexico wants this, we ought to get involved in helping someone else get it, rather than sitting here and trying to fight to protect ourselves. And I didn't know where the transportation discussion, the nuclear waste issue, could be discussed more than maybe in this committee, and so I just want to bring that up.
Mayor Lee, we're going to take those as public comments, but we're not going to have Tina or anybody respond to those public comments.
Oh, no, 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 I'm in the future.
No, I appreciate that. Just put that on record.
And Mr. Chairman?
And perhaps we could bring it back as a discussion item for the whole board.
I'd like to make an agenda item out of just to get the information.
Very good.
And Mr. Chairman, if I might, I'd like to add in on that, because the U.S. Conference of Mayors is very, very much involved in it, and there's a lot going on. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I might add to the comment period, as a longtime member of the Nevada Nuclear Waste Committee, I think as the money we're spending, perhaps we could spend in getting the information out more to other states, so they will realize what's going to be going through their, their states and on their streets and on their highways, because that information, the U.S. government tried for a long time to keep as low radar as possible, and if we can get that out, people will realize it's not just Nevada that's in danger, it's the entire country where they have to come across to Nevada.
Mr. Chairman, I know you don't want a discussion, but councilwoman, that is the whole problem. It has to travel throughout the country on roads that are not determined to be given to the public, days and times not even agendized for public consumption. So that has been all part of this, so when we bring it back to this body to discuss, definitely have input there, please.
And we appreciate all those public comments, and note for the record that there was no discussion. So if there, one more public comment.
As staff brings that agenda item back, I think you need to take a look at what's going on with the Gold Rail issue that's out there right now, that they're superseding some changes that would undo how trains move across the United States, number one. And secondarily, to all the groups, perhaps the others councils could do something, like a resolution, to support our designated monument, it's the last two that were designated here, because that ties into a proper separation as well.
Are lines getting so much thinner, counsel, on public comment? So that's it for the public comment from the boards today. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board? Seeing and hearing no one, thank you all for coming down. This meeting is adjourned.